I will call the Temecula Planning Commission regular meeting of June 19, 2024 to order, and we will begin with a flag salute from Commissioner Watts.
Please stand and join me in the flag salute.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, just as for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. And now we'll do roll call.
Commissioner Hagel.
Here.
Ruiz.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Charlie Trejo.
Here.
And Watts.
Here.
Okay, I understand there is, I have a public comment here. I'm going to read the section on public comments. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person or at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to the time the item is called for the public comments and submit it to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by city council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. So, we will do public comments now.
We have one that's right before you.
So Karen Harrison, or Hanson, I believe it is. You want to come up here? Yeah. Okay, just pull the microphone in front of you so that, okay, thank you. Welcome.
How's that?
Good, good.
Okay. I'm Karen Hanson with the Sierra Club, and we wanted to make some comments about the the port, the housing, excuse me. And we, there's nothing, no problem with the housing, but we want to make sure it's energy efficient and kind of leans on built-in electricity, like they, KP developers are doing that quite a bit. They're doing that up in benefit why I live. And then also, we want to encourage you to use as many native plants instead of the ones that are usually used because we're wiping out the butterflies and the bees and all that in this area, kind of completely. So, all we have to do is put in native plants. And we can give you lots of information on that, and don't use any pesticide or herbicide because it sort of defeats the purpose. And that's, that's why I'm here. We can give you information on native plants, lots of, lots of it. That's it.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, next is the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion on these items unless members of commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to the planning commission at temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. And we have the minutes on the consent calendar, and I believe that is all we have on the consent calendar.
I'll move approval of consent.
Second.
Okay, we have first and second. All in favor say aye.
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 Well abstain.
You abstain. So that's four, zero with one abstention? Oh.
It's three, zero, and with, I guess it would be two abstentions at the moment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't realize he was not here. Is he coming back?
He'll be right back.
Okay. Okay, we will begin with our business, which is number two, continued from March 20, 2024. Planning Commission meeting, long-range application number LR24-0028, amending chapter 8.48 of the Temecula Municipal Code. And Julie?
I'm here. Hello, good evening, everyone. Let's get that in there. I'm sure all of you recall, we were, we were here in March going over the amended tree ordinance. At that time, we provided a staff report and presentation to the planning commission regarding an amendment to the heritage tree ordinance, chapter 814, 8.48 of the Temecula Municipal Code, and outlined some of the following information. The original heritage tree ordinance was adopted in July 2009, and in March 2019, the city was awarded a CAL FIRE grant in the amount of $323,000 to perform certain tasks and duties.
They don't have the PowerPoint up on this.
Oh, they don't. I didn't know that, thank you. I didn't even notice.
Sure. There it goes.
Okay, backup. Some of the project activity included to plant 300 trees, to develop a tree inventory and canopy assessment, and to prepare an urban forest management plan, update any existing city ordinance or in policies to incorporate portions of the UFMP, and to formally adopt the UFMP and any ordinance amendments. City council has since adopted the UFMP. They did that on March of 2024. And the final task that we have at hand is to approve and adopt the amended tree ordinance. At that meeting, the, the planning commission of March 20th, members raised a variety of questions which could not be, could not be addressed at the meeting, so staff was given the opportunity to go back and review and gather up answers, and, and then this item was continued to this meeting. As a follow-up to the PC meeting on April 17, staff met with the Planning Commission Municipal Code Maintenance Subcommittee, including Commissioners Hagel and Ruiz. Each of the questions that were raised at the March 20th meeting were thoroughly discussed to include the following. The first item was in regard to the permit requirements and some of the exceptions that were allowed, and how to improve fire hardening, and how best to support property owners in obtaining insurance coverage for their property. Under section 8.48-210, the current ordinance states, "A protected tree may not be cut, removed, relocated, or encroached upon without a permit, except under the following circumstances." The original ordinance stated for item number four, that the fire department personnel actively engaged in fighting a fire have determined the removal of the tree is necessary to their firefighting efforts. What we did in our discussion was decide that we would remove a portion of that, so we edited that, that item to say that the fire department personnel have determined that the removal of the tree is necessary to their firefighting efforts, rather than they must be actively engaged in a fire at the time. And then we added a new one in regards to the properties owner's insurance coverages to add that a permit would not be required if an owner of real property is prohibited from obtaining insurance coverage to adequately secure and protect said property. The next item, let's see. The second item was to provide clarification on the permit application and review process in section 8.48.220 of the current ordinance. And the primary question was, who does the permit requirement apply to? And to clarify, the requirement for the permit applies to all owners of real property. Each applicant shall submit an application for a protected tree removal or relocation permit and pay the appropriate fees. If an application pertains to five or fewer trees on a single parcel, then the director shall have, shall review and make the determination to approve or deny. If denied by the director, it may be appealed to the planning commission. And then for four, or for more than five trees in the application is reviewed by then the planning commission. So if denied by the planning commission, it then may be appealed to the city council. In addition to that, in the section 8.48-230, standards of approval, approvals by the director or planning commission to allow for removal or relocation may impose certain conditions to offset or mitigate the action. And that is to relocate a tree to another location, either onsite or offsite, depending on the, the property. If, if it is determined to be on an onsite, the planting of three replacement trees for every one protected tree that has been removed. That used to state that planting of only one replacement tree per every one removed. And then if offsite, the planting of two 48-inch box trees for every one protected tree removed, when not feasible to plant onsite. So, and both of these are under that, that caveat, that if it's not feasible, then there has to be some other arrangements made and concessions made. The next item was, what is the fee schedule for the initial violations of any of this, if someone was to remove a tree without a permit? What would that fee schedule look like? What is our fee schedule? And can we impose a $5,000 fine for any violation? So, under section 8.48-230, section 300, 310, and 320, under the standards of approval, violations, remedies, and restitution, removal of protected tree without a permit can cause the following. Violations are subject to criminal misdemeanor penalties and administrative citations pursuant to chapters 1.16, 1.20, and 1.21 of the municipal code as follows. Code violation fees are currently set at five, or $50, $150, and $250 per violation, and that is pursuant to government code sections 53069.4, 25132, and 36900. Payment may include the cost to also procure, plant, establish, and maintain each replacement tree for up to five years. In addition to any other remedy or penalty provided, the city may seek restitution, whether for the replacement of a tree or payment in lieu of replacement. Payment could be well in excess of $5,000, depending on the circumstances. And the last item, number four, related to the designation of protected trees under section 8.48.160, through the development of the ordinance amendment, we added the designation of a protected tree to include a mature tree. And that is any tree that has a trunk with diameter larger than 24 inches at a point of four and a half feet above the root crown, or trees with multiple trunks which exceeds the diameter of a single trunk tree by two inches. We have now added lang, additional language to include that a mature tree shall not include a eucalyptus species, although a eucalyptus species is eligible to be designated as a protected tree through the nomination process as set forth in section 8.48.160C. Let's see. And then also, there was something brought to our attention today by Commissioner Hagel in regards to a discrepancy between the mature tree diameter and the measurement of a protected tree being more than 12 inches versus an oak tree that was stated in the original ordinance as 18 inches. So we've corrected that, that error. So they both state 12. Staff has determined that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to sections 15378B5 and 15061B3, and staff asks the commission recommends to, that the city council adopt an ordinance amending chapter 8.48 of the Temecula Municipal Code. That's the end of the presentation, so if you have any questions, feel free.
Thank you, Julie. Adam?
Can you go back to the slide on the penalties, the fines? Right there. Okay. So, that last part, that the city may seek restitution whether for a replacement of or payment, payment could be in excess of 5,000. So can you just maybe explain that to me a little bit? Those are code violation fees, I see those. And, and what are those exactly? Like what does that, the 50, 150, 250, is that kind of a first warning, a second warning, third warning?
Exactly.
Okay.
It is exactly that.
Okay.
As far as the $5,000 fine, that was a recommendation or request of Commissioner Solis.
Right.
And what we determined as staff in working with our resident expert, Stacy Fox, who is our tree arborist, it's been determined that we could easily exceed that $5,000 fine. If we put a fixed fine in here, we have no leeway to adjust it or ask for anything further. So what we wanted to be able to do is that, on a case-by-case basis, it could be up into tens of thousands of dollars, depending on the circumstance. And Stacy can speak to that more if you have any other questions about it.
Want to speak to it? Yeah, that is kind of my question.
Thank you. As Julie mentioned earlier, each tree species and site, it's, it's kind of difficult to assess the cost of replacement tree.
Okay.
A species of tree has different values. The size of the tree determines a different value, and whether that tree has to be removed, replaced, or rehabbed. So, and also those site conditions. If a tree is being replaced in a certain site, it may be more challenging than other sites. You know, maybe a crane's needed to install that tree, so the costs can vary greatly depending on the type of tree, size of tree, location of the tree.
So a person is not being fined $5,000, though?
No.
Correct? Yeah, that's what I want to clarify.
Correct. It could be less than 5,000 or, or substantially over $5,000, in lieu of also those penalties, the 50, 150, and $250 fees.
So they could be fined $5,000.
Sammy, if I can clarify, so we'd need to make a distinction between fines and restitution. So fines, we are limited under the government code as to the amount that we can impose as an administrative fine, and that is set forth.
50, 150, 250.
It's actually higher than that under the government code. It would depend on how much we've adopted as a city by resolution as our fine amounts, and maybe that's where the 50, 150, 250 is coming from. But we could, under the government code, it's 100 for the first offense, 200 for the second offense, and 500 for subsequent offenses. So those are kind of the maximum levels that are identified. We can't go higher than that for an administrative fine. If it's a fine that is based on like misdemeanor, I'm sorry, infraction, I misspoke, for an administrative fine that's treated as an infraction, those are the maximum fines. If we're talking about a misdemeanor-type violation, that can go up to $1,000. But again, that's under the fining context. What I'm hearing staff talk about is restitution, which is a different concept than a fine, but rather to make whole for the damage that was caused to the tree that was removed.
Okay.
Correct. That restitution of that cost of replacing that tree.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That helps. Thanks.
Okay, we're going to go to Commissioner.
Me?
Solis, sorry. Since this was something, I know that you had questioned before, so.
Yeah, that explained, okay, thank you for that. I do have a question on the, the last slide, I think. Can you explain to me the eucalyptus section of the tree? How it says, something about the eucalyptus is a protected tree, but it, you added it to the mature, so it's either, it's only protected if it's bigger than 24 inches?
Well, it can be designated as protected, but also, if it is a mature tree, under those measurements as well, can be considered a mature tree under those designated categories, which is the species, a specific species of oak. In Sycamore, there was five different species.
Yeah, okay, I saw that.
The eucalyptus were kind of, this, this was the request of Commissioner Watts, that, that we kind of have something in there about eucalyptus, because we all know, as well as Stacy, that there is, there are some species that cause a lot of damage. They could be hazardous for health and safety and fire, and so rather than completely excluding them, we're, we're giving the opportunity for it to be assessed, whether it falls into that mature category, its location, its health, and, and whether it's causing all of those problems or potentially causing that problem, and that whether it could be deemed a protected or not. If someone was to nominate it for protection, then it would be fully assessed before we would accept that or approve it.
So, under the current definition of mature tree, it's any tree that has a trunk diameter larger than 24 inches measured at a point four and a half feet above the root crown. And so the concern was that a lot of eucalyptus trees would fall under that definition and automatically be considered mature trees. So the amendment that was just discussed is to include language that says a mature tree shall not include a eucalyptus species, although a eucalyptus species is eligible to be designated as a protected tree. So, without this addition that was just discussed, any eucalyptus that's more than 24 inches and four and a half, four and a half feet above the root would automatically qualify. And so what this does is says, no, it doesn't automatically qualify. Instead, you have to go through a process of designating that tree as a protected tree.
Of evaluating it, and during the evaluating process, you consider it protected or not protected.
Correct, and that would be the valuation done by the planning commission.
Got it. Okay. And I think that's it. There's my only two questions.
Okay. Commissioner Watts?
I don't really have any questions, but I appreciate the, the eucalyptus section in there. As I was driving down Solana Boulevard yesterday, I looked at one lot, and I just, I just had to go, boy, we've got to get this eucalyptus thing solved, because it could be a real problem if somebody wanted to keep nominating somebody's eucalyptus trees and coming before the planning commission, and on, and on, and on. So I think everybody's pretty much in agreement that eucalyptus aren't the best tree in the world, and they are an invasive species, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you very much, I appreciate the, the work on that and getting that to where it was very acceptable. Thank you.
Of course, you're welcome.
Sorry, one more question.
Go ahead.
I know we discussed last time about where the protected area is, and I think the last conversation was that only the backyard was a protected area for the tree? And right here, it shows the entire property is.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, it was, what was said before was confusing. It meant the whole property, but the way it was worded just was confusing, so.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So they clarified that. My only question is, do we have any, do we have an inventory of trees that are protected at this point?
We currently do not have an inventory of.
We do not?
Former heritage trees or protected trees.
Right. Do you have any eye on any trees?
Always.
Always.
In our parks, definitely.
Good. I'm anxiously awaiting the time that we do protect some trees, so. Do we, we don't have any public speakers on this?
We do not.
Okay. So we can have a discussion now, or if anyone wants to make a motion?
Yeah, so this is going to be a recommendation to the city council regarding the adoption of the ordinance as presented.
I will make a motion. Oh, we're discussing, sorry.
That's right.
Are we discussing? Are we good? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to adopt this ordinance as amended. Anything else that we need in there?
Do we have a second?
Just to make sure the record is clear for the minute, so the, the motion would include the changes to section 8.48.160 that were discussed in the presentation with respect to the mature tree, be adding the eucalyptus, eucalyptus species exception, as well as the removal of C, which is the designated areas, that were causing some confusion.
That.
Yeah, and I believe there was that one other change to relate it to the oak tree, so.
Yes. All of that.
Okay, all of that?
That's my motion. Yeah.
Second the motion.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, and we'll vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? No nays? Five, or six to zero? Six to zero?
Five.
Five to zero? Excuse me.
Good work, thank you.
I thought it came in.
Thank you.
I thought it came in twice.
All right.
We have two public hearings. And do we have any speakers for the public hearings?
We do.
We do? Okay, then I got to read this. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing, or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition of the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary, or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to the planning commission at temeculaca.gov. Email comments in all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. So our first public hearing is item number three, planning application numbers 22PA, or PA 22-0929, 0930, and 0931, a development plan for an approximately 60,258 square foot four-story, 50-room hotel, PA 22-0930. A minor exception for a two-foot increase in the height of the building for an architectural tower element, and PA 22-0931, a variance to allow for parking within the Creekside Parking Facility setback and encroachment of the building over the Build 2 line along Old Town Front Street due to the narrow width of the project site. The project is located on the west side of Old Town Front Street, approximately 400 feet south of Santiago Road, APN 922-100-048. And we have Scott, who is going to present.
Thank you, Mr. Termin and planning commissioners. As you stated, this is planning application numbers PA 22-0929, 0930, and 0931, the Temecula Boutique Hotel. So PA 22-0929 is the development plan for approximately 60,258 square foot four-story, 50-room hotel. 0930 is the minor exception for a two-foot increase in the height of the building for an architectural tower element, and 0931 is a variance to allow for parking within the Creekside Parking Facility setback and encroachment of the building over the Build 2 line along Old Town Front Street. Project is located. Project is located in red here on your screen. It's on the west side of Old Town Front Street, approximately 400 feet south of Santiago Road. So in terms of the Old Town specific plan, it is here on your screen. And this is the very last parcel within the specific plan south of Old Town proper, outside of the arches. So it is located in the downtown core district of the Old Town specific plan. It is four stories, 57 feet high, has 50 rooms, six retail spaces, an outdoor patio areas, gym, pool area, bar, and a dining area. Fifteen parking... Fifty parking spaces are provided. And in Old Town, parking is only required for the guest rooms. There's no parking requirements for the retail outlets. Terms of access to the project site, you can get vehicular access both in egress and egress on the south side of the project and an egress only on the north side of the project. Pedestrian access, this is just into the hotel itself, not into any of the retail outlets. There's the main entrance off of Old Town Front Street. And then the lobby of the hotel is on the back along Marietta Creek. There's two entrances into that. And then that final star on the bottom left is showing where you can take access off of the Marietta Creek Trail. So there is one major site constraint on this project site is there is an existing storm drain on the south end of the project. So you cannot do any physical building on that site. So you know, usually like in Old Town, you have a parcel. The building's taken up the entire parcel just because the parcels are so small. So you can't do that here. So all that's located here is some parking, your trash enclosure, and some utilities. And then if you blow that up, you can actually see the storm drain there that's inside of the dotted lines. In terms of the hotel itself, this is the ground floor. As I stated earlier, the lobby is on the backside of the hotel along the Marietta Creek. There are two patio areas alongside, along Marietta Creek. So what's unique about this is you really kind of have two frontages on the hotel. You have one that's on Front Street and then one that's on Marietta Creek. And if you remember some other buildings that we've looked at here, just because you're along Marietta Creek doesn't mean that you can ignore that. There has to be a pedestrian environment, retail spaces. It's not street activation like we've done for other projects, but it's creek activation. You can't just throw your parking behind the hotel. You have to account for all that with all the development standards of the specific plan. And this shows the six retail spaces. So there's four retail spaces currently proposed along Front Street and then two on Marietta Creek side. So then what does this look like on the hotel? So that is the hotel entrance right in the main, right in the middle of the building, the vehicular access spots, and then all the retail spaces that are lining Front Street. Then this is the rear of the building. You have your lobby in the middle. And then the retail spaces with the patio areas. So on the second floor, you have a reception and seating areas and wine tasting, gym, and a guest lounge. And then obviously guest rooms. So skipping to the fourth floor because the third floor is just completely guest rooms. On the fourth floor is where you have your pool and spa area, which is on the northern end of the building. So it will receive the most sun. You also have your restaurant and bar area. And then obviously the kitchen that goes along with that. In terms of architecture, the proposed architectural style is Andalusian with elements of Spanish Renaissance and Mission Revival, which is specifically allowed in the specific plan. So the style elements within the design of the project are as follows. So obviously, this is the Front Street elevation. So it has entirely smooth stucco finish on the entire building, a U-shaped clay tile roof, arched windows, dark exposed beams, coin design details, and then a main stained glass element right on the main tower element. And then blowing that up just so you can see what that looks like. And the material board behind you on the wall shows the examples of that stained glass. So moving on to the minor exception, the applicant applied for a minor exception for a two-foot increase in the building height in the middle of the building along Old Town and Front Street, which is a 3.63% increase. So the Old Town specific plan allows for a 55-foot building height from grade. The proposed building is seven... There's 57 feet at the top of the tower design element. So a maximum 15% increase in building height is allowed per the City of Temecula Development Code. So they're only asking for the 3.63% increase. And this will allow for the roofline architectural element on that portion of the building. And that portion of the building is right in the middle. And that shows the 57 feet would be the only part of the building that is over 55 feet. Moving on to the variance. So the applicant applied for a variance for the parking placement adjacent to Marietta Creek and encroachment over the Build Two line along Old Town Front Street. So why was there a request for a variance? So the strict adherence to all applicable setbacks required on the Old Town specific plan would result in an undevelopable site, not just for this project, but for any project requiring parking due to the narrow width of the project site. So the first part of the variance, this shows the property line along the backside along Marietta Creek. The green is the Build Two line. Now, the requirement within the specific plan is for parking to be located another 20 feet beyond the Build Two line. And that's, of course, so we can have those retail areas so you can't see the parking. So if you located another 20 feet behind the Build Two line, that's where the parking setback would be. So you can see that there's currently parking areas that are proposed within that. So but we also have the requirement along Front Street to have activation, streetscape. So you have retail along Front Street as well. So there's a very narrow area where you would be having parking, which you would not be able to meet parking requirements of the project. So in order to have the variance to allow parking within that Marietta Creek side setback for the parking. So along Front Street... So this is the specific plan, Build Two line. If you did the full requirement of the specific plan, as you can see, it cuts right through the middle of the building. This is the proposed Build Two line. And we have the proposed 10-foot setback. So you know, you're walking down all the old streets in Old Town proper. It's all 20-foot sidewalks, which is very appropriate for a walkable Old Town. Once you get outside of the arches, you kind of got a different situation. You don't need 20-foot sidewalks. So if you reduce it down to a 10-foot sidewalk, that would be the standard for that area. And we all know about the U-Haul lot. So what's that develops, that would also be required, not to have a 20-foot sidewalk, but a 10-foot sidewalk. Then once you get past this project, it transitions out of Old Town. You're not going to have 20-foot sidewalks. You may not have 10-foot sidewalks. So it'd be an easier go-down from 10 to 5 or if sometime in the future that area redevelops even further, maybe it is a 10-foot sidewalk. So you just have a continuous sidewalk all the way down the road. You're not jogging back and forth the whole way. So in terms of landscaping, the Old Town specific plan, street trees are proposed along Old Town Front Street and plantings, including the red yucca Texas sage, are proposed along Marietta Creek. Terms of environmental, it is categorically exempt from CECA for Section 15332, which is a Class 32 for infill development projects. And with that, staff does recommend the planning commission approve PA 22-0929, PA 22-0930, and PA 22-0931, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my report. I am here. The applicant is here. The applicant's representative is here. And the architect is here.
Okay. We'll start then. Commissioner Solis? Do you have any questions?
I just have one question about the plan. Can you go back to the rendering? On the sides, right there, right there? There's like these black arches. Are those supposed to be transparent or...?
Excuse me. It's screening because that's where you're going to have your cars going in and out. So it's just screening so you don't see the movement of the cars. And eventually, in Old Town on the side lots, it's a zero-foot setback. So you're probably going to have a building that's going right up against this building.
Got it. So is it going to be... So then what happens with the... Oh, the windows, okay. Okay, that was it. That was my only question.
Commissioner Watts?
No questions.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Just one. And I don't know if you know or maybe it's better for the applicant, but the tower there, that's all stained glass. What's behind the glass? Is it just open? Is that whole tower just going to be open in the middle? Do you know? Or is that better for the applicant?
We can ask the architect.
Hold on then.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Okay, so you talked about... So there's 50 parking spots. So there's no parking for retail, per se.
Correct.
So where will those people park? Do we care?
Parking is not required for retail.
Yeah. Huh. Okay.
It's what makes these couple parcels outside of the arches of Old Town very unique.
Yeah.
Because in Old Town, you have the parking garage. You have designated parking lots. It's just a unique situation for these couple parcels.
Can you show me the slide where the parking is? Like the setback? If I can have a look at that again? Did you want to say something? You look like you want to say something.
I just... So parking's not required for retail in the plan. Is this parking, though, potentially available for retail? If someone's going there just for retail, could you still potentially park there provided there's a spot? Or do you have to be a guest to park your car there?
You are required to have a parking space available per hotel room. So how the applicant chooses to run that business operation for that would be up to them.
Okay.
Okay. That's a good question.
Is this the exhibit you wanted?
Yeah.
Okay.
So can you just kind of explain that again to me? Like where am I seeing the parking? Where is the parking? Right there.
That's a parking that would be affected by the variance. The rest of the parking is right. It's all that.
On the right?
On the right and in this area.
So is that parking actually seen? You can see those cars or you can't? That looks like it's in the middle.
So the parking here, you'll briefly be able to see. But remember, this is the area you can't build on.
Right.
This area all here is behind the building. So...
Behind or...?
So it'd be behind this area on the project site.
Where he was asking about the... Yeah, the arches. It's right in there. That's where they're going in there to park. Okay. Okay, that's good clarification. Yeah, just... Yeah. Anyway, so that'll be a question. I can ask the applicant about the retail and parking. And I also had a question about the stained glass. So I'll ask the applicant on that.
Yeah, something else on this project is, you know, it might be a 2022 application. Staff, myself, Stuart, has been working with this applicant since 2017, 2018. They've looked at doing underground parking. They looked at all kinds of things. And this actually ends up being the best design.
Yeah, it's just a tough, tough spot. Yeah, I understand that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, just one question. The retail on the front side, if any of these, those were restaurants, I'm assuming then that you could not have eating service on the sidewalk since it's 10 feet?
You're correct. There would not be enough room on that sidewalk. You could potentially, if it was on the backside or they're showing the designated areas on those two, that would be a good location. Plus, you'd have the creek and the creek trail that's there.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, do we have any speakers on this?
We do not. We only have the applicant, who has filled out a request to speak for him.
Then I will open up the public hearing and we'll ask the applicant to step forward. Welcome. If you wanted to share your dream?
My dream? Actually, I'm the applicant's representative. My name is Matthew Fagan. Can you hear me well enough? Okay, thank you. First off, we're tickled to be here. We've been working on this project for several years. It's an interesting piece of property, very constrained. Scott did an amazing job with his presentation. Scott did an amazing job with his presentation. And first, right out the gate, I'd like to thank all the staff here. There were a lot of, it was just not an easy project. And they have the best attitudes, they want to help. They also know the codes, so they have, we have to work with them within, you know, the parameters of the codes. So we brought on a gentleman named Chris Campbell, who's done a lot of work in Old Town to help us out with the architecture and the site design. So he's here, he can probably answer a couple of questions. So I'm here on behalf of Sam Mohan and OM Development. And this is a wonderful boutique hotel. And the idea of having retail on the bottom floor and the rooms above, that, again, implements the vision for Old Town. When we talk about parking, we all know that we want people to get out of their cars. It's a different mindset than being on the other side of the freeway in suburbia. This is more of an urban-type feel. So that the folks that want to come down here, again, this is the last piece going down south of Old Town. It's a wonderful gateway, a wonderful statement coming into the city. It's, Old Town's a walking district. So within proximity of the particular site is the lot over at the Stampede, and also the lot that I parked in, whichever way it is from here, I don't know, I lost my orientation. So, again, there will be opportunities for people and the employees to park, walk, go down this way. You know, with the whole idea of creating interest on a street, so that people will walk and come down here. And so we're hoping to attract nice tenants. None are identified right now, but it'll be the same concept as everyone just finding a parking spot and walking. And that's kind of how it's gonna work for the retail. We've reviewed the conditions of approval. We're in agreement with the conditions of approval. And really, at this point, I think we're asking that we could get the planning commissions not of approval on the project. Sam Mohan is ready to submit his construction docs. He'd like to start building this, it has been a long process. And so we look for your approval. Our architect is here. He told me he just cannot wait to come up here and answer your questions, because he likes a captive audience, just like me. We also have our civil engineer also. But again, just to circle back, the staff has been wonderful. Every one of them, and they tried so hard. When there was a, you can't do that, there was always a way to, let's all work together and try to fix it. So that's what you have before you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
I'll ask any questions of the applications team? Anybody else on the team?
Well, maybe just to clarify what was just proposed for the parking. So is the plan to reserve the parking spots strictly for hotel guests? Or if there is available spots there, could someone potentially park there to access retail?
I'm gonna turn around now like I'm on, what's that show with, Let's Make a Deal? Sam will come up and see if he can answer that.
Good evening, folks. How are you guys all doing?
Hi.
Thank you for letting us present it. First of all, I want to say Scott and his team, we've been working out all of this stuff for the last five years, six years almost, so thank you very much. Parking, it's based on the occupancy. So if we're full occupancy for that day, that night, let's say weekend, then the parking would be offered to the public parking on this side, right? We'll probably have a cart, some sort of cart to go back and forth for those people. We'll probably have two carts, which will be going back and forth to bring them from parking lot with the city and whatnot. If the parking is available during weekdays, anyone is shopping in that area is able to park.
Okay, so essentially, you know, a consumer, resident, whoever wants to come down there and check it out, there's potential that it's there? And if not, then there'll be shuttle service to get them back over there?
Yes, there's a shuttle service for the people who do not have a parking. Let's say for the shoppers.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and then, yeah, I guess while I got, am I curious?
Question about the stained glass?
And what's proposed in the tower?
So the proposed tower is basically a facade. There are rooms behind the facade, but they won't be looking out. We've got, if Scott can put that up there, I can explain. Okay, so right behind the facade, there's nothing, just the stained glass. But then you've got the balconies on the other side for the rooms, and they can actually view out.
So from the outside in, you wouldn't see anything?
You would not be able to see anything inside.
Inside out?
Inside out, you cannot see anything.
Okay. All right, thank you.
It's strictly a facade.
That answers my question, because the colors are so different, right?
Actually, you know what? When you do the colors, they don't come out exactly the way...
Yeah, I mean...
But the colors that are...
Yeah.
In the pictures are different, so when you're doing your plans, for whatever reason, those colors did not come out right.
Yeah, no, it's just an interesting idea to do that.
But we're working with the city, the planning, like I said, you know, for the last six years, and we're gonna present the best building that there will be here.
No, yeah, I mean, I know Adam likes those workable balconies, for sure, that they, right?
Yes.
So I looked, I saw that right away, I picked up on that right away. So, yeah, I don't think I have any questions. I think that kind of answers it with the retail parking and...
And retail work, everything else. Also, we work with the city to make sure that we have a retail in the front, so it's, so your full Old Downtown is busy all the way to the end.
Right, right.
And then for the creek side, we're gonna open up the creek openings.
Yeah.
So people who are running around, they can maybe come have a cup of coffee in the back, so it's open for public.
Right, right.
It's not enclosed, it's not fenced, it's not, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
On that last picture that we had, are the balconies actual balconies? Are they just...
No, they're actual balconies. People will be able to come out and sit. Yes.
Thank you.
They're about four to five feet. I, yeah, it's approximately that much, yeah.
Commissioner Solis?
I have a question for the architect. Is this the time, or are they gonna? Hi, how you doing?
Good evening.
I had a question about the floor plan. So as you walk into the main lobby from the ground floor, would there be an elevator that would take you to the second floor, and then the second floor is like the primary floor?
That's correct.
Okay. And then can you tell me a little bit about, like, the front elevation, like, kind of that design that you were thinking?
So in the packet that you have, elevation sheets, there is a breakdown of the style elements that we drew from the Andalusian Renaissance Revival and Mission Revival styles. So stained glass window is one, but we played with it a little bit. The arched windows that Scott pointed out, the adobe-style brick wainscot, the projecting balconies with heavy bracket details underneath them, and then also all of the heavy timber eaves that are around on the top floor. So you get some detail even from the ground, looking up at the building.
Okay. And I think that's it. I have a question about the first story.
I also wanted to mention, with regard to the street frontage and the variance application for the 10-foot setback along the street. So obviously, Scott made a very good presentation about the constriction of the parking, and being able to provide as much parking as we can in the garage, fully shielded from the rights of way, so not visible. Those were the screens that you asked about, Commissioner Solis. In the back, they'll have plants on them, so they'll eventually turn green. We did recess, because we are under an obligation to achieve 50-foot varied facades in the specific plan. We did recess the building five feet from the property line along the street. So there would be an opportunity for a small amount of sidewalk dining outside of the 10-foot sidewalk, if one of those happened to be a restaurant. Probably more on the scale of a coffee shop or something like that, I would think. Just wanted to make sure you had that additional detail.
Sorry. So where would that be? That's on the front street, correct?
Front street, yes. So you'll notice the building jogs in twice. It's setback about five feet from the property line.
Oh, okay.
Where the retail doors are located. So there and there, Scott just circled them.
So, you know, that could be for a couple tables for, like you say, coffee.
Yeah, you could fit a four-top, a couple two-tops, something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Thank you. Commissioner Ruiz, do you want to... Ruiz, excuse me.
No, I actually don't have any further questions or comments. I mean, I think they've addressed what my concerns were, and hopefully everyone understood. I think the parking was a good point to bring up, Lanay, and I think it's nice having our shuttle service and something moving forward, you know, on that as well.
Lanay?
Yeah, I think it looks really good. Like, I'd be excited about having that at the end of Old Town, you know, and looks like a tricky property, right? Looks like what staff has helped you do, and you guys have done. I think they've done a great job of making that look really good in that little corner there, and we'll see what happens with U-Haul, because, you know, having U-Haul right next door, a little weird, but, yeah, anyway, I'm excited about it.
Yeah, nice presentation. It looks like a great project. The architecture is really, really nice. The style is just very, very nice. The variance makes sense, absolutely. It's within the code, right? So the percentage, so that's good. Landscaping looks good. Retail looks good. And I wanted to really give you a compliment on putting the pool in the right location. So we're sensitive to that, and it looks like that'll be the perfect spot for it. So all in all, that's pretty much an A report card, so I just wanted to pass that on.
Yeah, I want to agree. The project looks great. The architect did a good job on the layout. It's a very difficult lot, it's narrow, the parking, the driveway in and out. I did want to talk about kind of the focal point. Do you guys think that the focal point of the entrance should be the grand, or how do you guys feel about the focal point of the building, like the entrance, like the main entrance?
That should be the what?
Like, the main focal point? You think it should be...
The stained glass?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you guys think about the stained glass?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's different. Like, I would first look at these colors and go, whoa, yeah, not really, but as I look at it, I just, I can see where they're trying to pull in some of these other architectural things that we see in the plans, and I kind of like it. I think it's different, but I think it'll all pull in together, once it's all there. I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I think the setup really does still align with the boutique hotel that it's going for, you know, versus a big, massive one that, I don't know if that's what you're referring to, with like, kind of that entrance point. It is still a boutique hotel.
I'm thinking about maybe like a, maybe a bigger, more focal point on the ground level, but I think you made up a good point, that it's a boutique hotel.
I think for the size and what they're intended to do, I mean, I think the natural attractions obviously is gonna go to that tower, just because it is so different, but I think it will look nice. But while remembering, it is intended to be a boutique hotel, it's not supposed to be this huge entrance, in my opinion.
Yeah, I like it too, and at first, I'm kind of like, believe it or not, I asked myself, what am I doing? But the colors didn't jump out at me. And I said, I must be hanging around Lanay too much, but then they grew on me, and I particularly liked the subtleness of the colors. There's a very subtle gradation there between the gray and, or what looked like gray on the picture here is probably not, but the contrast was very apparent to me, but it's subtle, and I think that's really a nice touch, so. I like, yeah, answer your question, yeah.
And I would agree, given the length of the building, and, you know, how much the frontage, I think that's where the bulk of the building is, I think you need something in a portrait manner, you know, that's very high to kind of break up that long frontage there. So I think that element really, really helps break that up. So, and my comments are, you know, I see a lot of proposals come through here, and want to say I'm very impressed. I think that a lot of thought has been given to the detail. I think the architectural plan is very, very good, really well-thought-through, and particularly given the challenge for this site. I think what you'll end up having is the anchor to the south part of Old Town. I think it is something that will attract more people to go further down into Old Town, and, you know, I hope this is the beginning of some other changes that take place in that portion of Old Town.
I'll make a motion to...
There's three.
Yeah, to accept planning application numbers PA-220929, 0930, 0931.
I'll second.
I'll second, go ahead.
Or I'll third.
Okay. Who did second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. We got the first and a second?
And a third.
And a third?
And a third, right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Five to zero this time.
And thank you for the comments to staff. We like hearing that. Thanks.
Okay. Last public hearing, number four, planning application number PA-14-0087, tentative tract map, TTM 36483, for the creation of 164 single-family residential lots and nine open-space lots on 42.64 acres, for planning area four within the Paloma del Sol specific plan. Scott?
All right, one more, thank you. As you stated, this is tentative tract map number 36483, which is planning area four of the Paloma del Sol specific plan, and it is planning application number PA-14-0087. So it is a tentative tract map, number 36483, for the creation of 164 single-family residential lots and nine open-space slots on 42.64 acres. Little bit of the project history, I know some of you are probably wondering, the project was submitted in April of 2014. That's over 10 years ago. The delays in the project were due to a change of the developer during the entitlement process, a lack of responsiveness and not addressing staff comments from the original developer, not from the current applicant. This project has been through 17 submittals. Many of those early submittals were five, six, seven months in between submittals, so staff would give comments, the previous applicant developer would sit on the project for five, six, seven months, resubmit the project, and none of the concerns or comments were addressed. So the same comment letter would go back out, it'd be there for five, six, seven months, come back in, maybe one or two comments were addressed. So it was just a cycle that was going on like that for many years early on, until the current developer took over the project. There was also the preparation of an environmental consistency evaluation, that was in the staff report for your review. And there was also discussions with flood control regarding storm drain improvements in Butterfield Stage Road, and we'll get to that a little bit later. So the project is located here on the northwest corner of Butterfield Stage Road and Temecula Parkway. As we stated, it's planning area four of the Paloma del Sol specific plan. So this would be the build-out, finally, of that specific plan area. The residences to the north and to the west are part of that specific plan area. So the land use is medium-density residential, that's per the specific plan. The density is allowed to be between two to five dwelling units per acre. This is proposed at 3.85 dwelling units per acre. The number of residential lots allowed per the specific plan is 188. The current proposal is for 164. And in terms of the lot sizes, the average lot size is 5,903 square feet. The minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet. The minimum lot size allowed per the specific plan is also 5,000 square feet. So this shows tentative tract map 36483. In terms of access points, you have two access points off of De Portola, and then you have one off of Seenon Way, which is from the adjacent neighborhood, which, as they stated, is part of the specific plan area. So, private recreation center, the project will not be part of the existing homeowners' association, and will not have access to any of the existing private amenities. So to combat that, staff has put a condition of approval that will require private recreation amenities, and I'll just read that for you. So a development plan application for a private recreation center shall be submitted concurrently with a home product review application for the project. The recreation center shall include, but not limited to, an appropriately-sized pool and spa, clubhouse, seating areas, and other active and passive amenities. This is the area where that recreation center would be. That area is approximately 2.6 acres, obviously located right in the middle of the tract. In terms of home product review, you know, normally, as you guys have seen with the Somers Bend developments, when we bring tract maps to you, we bring product as well, and landscape, and amenities. Back in 2014, when this project was submitted, that wasn't how we did things. That just started relatively recently. So the home product review, which will include the architecture, landscape, and amenities, will be submitted at a later date. So that and the development plan for the recreation center will come before the planning commission together for review. So you'll see the recreation center, the architecture, landscaping, amenities, all the stuff that you are used to seeing. Moving on to the Butterfield Stage Storm Drain, I will turn this over to the Assistant Director of Public Works to run through that a little bit.
So the Butterfield Stage Storm Drain, as part of this project, they're going to be required to address off-site flows. The off-site flows come from the county side and up behind Crown Hill Development, and they end up going down south and to the west, and end up hitting what we commonly refer to as the Savala property. The Savala property is at the corner of De Portola and Butterfield Stage Road. The flows would go in there, there is an inlet just south of there where these flows would be. Originally, this project, when it was part of the original developer, it was conditioned to put in a 96-inch storm drain, because as you saw on the aerial photo, flows were going through the middle of the site and going to an inlet, and there was a riparian area that was kind of created from this leftover parcel from the original development of Paseo del Sol. So this project was conditioned to put a 96-inch storm drain all the way down to Maile and Vale and south. So you can't see that portion of the inlet here, and this one, it was the original site plan, but you can see that the flows through the topography are going, as I said, on the right side, and you guys know the Big Feed Store and the Corona properties that are the two parcels south of the Savala property. So then what would happen is, the original project was conditioned to take these flows down to Maile and Vale and down to Temecula Creek. Now, when, just before, I believe, the new developer, Woodside Homes, took over, Riverside County approached us, and they said that they had been looking at this regional problem, and a regional solution, because the original assessment district, 159, way back in the day, was assessed all the properties in the area and built a lot of facilities. We're talking about in the 90s. Built the channels that are adjacent to the hospital, there were other amenities, or I should say, facilities that were built. But the one thing that wasn't built was accepting the storm drain flows, some type of system when Butterfield was expanded, and now the model, the hydraulic and hydraulic analysis showed that 33,000 CFS cubic feet per second would be coming from, as I said, the county area behind Crown Hill, and it hits that Savala property, and theoretically in the model, it would overtop Butterfield Stage Road. So flood control approached us, and they said they wanted to come up with a regional solution. And that regional solution was adding a 10-foot diameter storm drain into Butterfield Stage Road, and bringing it south to Temecula Creek, right through Butterfield Stage Road, and then going right behind Ralph's and hitting the creek that way. So the developer was approached that this new solution would be available, and so that they weren't putting it in no longer on the southwest side of their project and down to Maile and Vale, south to the creek, but rather flood control wanted this solution because it solves a regional problem. So we have conditioned the developer. The first condition was they needed to submit or put together the plan specs and estimates, the PSNE package. And secondly, they are conditioned to fund the shortfall. The reason there's a shortfall in what the funding would be is because the assessment district, 8159, has $4 million left in it, and then it's done. So that $4 million was discovered, and so now it's an opportunity to use it. And then the $3 million came from flood control. And then the three million dollars came from flood control. They wanted to put three million to this project. So their board passed a resolution to have three million dollars out of their general fund added to this project. And the last component will be the shortfall. And we expect it to be around four to five million, depending upon bid estimates when we actually construct the project. The other nuance to this is that the developer is only conditioned to provide that monies by the first building permit. So prior to any building permit, people, construction and people going, they have to give us that shortfall. That total amount, then, that is going to be used for the city to construct that project. So because there are public funds already going towards it, the developer is not allowed to build it. So the city must build it. And so the city will take possession. You're gonna see an item go to city council in a couple of weeks. We're gonna be taking a co-op agreement between the city and flood control, and then we will execute the project. So developers on the, on the hook just for the shortfall. So I hope that summarizes the storm drain situation.
Alright. So in terms of environmental for this project, uh, there was previous sequel that was done as part of the Paloma del Sol specific plan. So there was an environmental impact report that was prepared in nineteen eighty-eight. There was four addenda to that EIR in nineteen ninety-two, two in nineteen ninety-nine, and one in two thousand and two. So it's been found that the proposed project is consistent with the previously adopted Paloma del Sol EIR and addenda, and no further environmental review is required. And that is per Public Resources Code Section two, one-one-six-six, and Government Code Section six-five-four-five-seven. With that, staff does recommend the planning commissioner approve PA-14-0087, subject to the conditions of approval. Uh, those conditions have been provided to the applicant who are in agreement with those conditions. Uh, that concludes my report. I am again here for questions, and the applicant team is here as well.
Okay, um, it's time for questions, and just a reminder that questions only. Comments will be held to the public hearing. So Commissioner Ruiz? Ruiz? Okay.
Alright, I've got a couple of questions. And I know that at a later date, we'll see the amenities and all of that part. But I guess my, and I did, had already asked you about the, you know, ten-year period, so that's a good explanation on that. With, and maybe this is a question for the applicant, but I'm thinking about the continuity of Paloma that exists right now, right? And this is a, the newest homes that will be in Paloma. So my question is, why are they not included with Paloma and their amenities? And HOA? And, uh, you know, and just the continuity of the built-out Paloma already? So that's, that's my question. I know it's across the street, but still, I'm just wondering about that continuity.
So obviously, in an ideal world, you would want this project to join the existing HOA and be a part of that community. Um, as we are wrapping up the entitlement period of, of the tentative map, we found out that there was a sunset clause with the HOA where new development didn't automatically get accepted into the HOA. There had to be a vote by the Paloma residents' HOA board to accept them into the HOA. The HOA voted to not accept them. So Woodside doesn't have a choice. They can't join it. So that is why they'll have to form their own HOA, do their own amenities. Terms of, like, the look and the architecture, they still are part of the specific plan. So they will still have to meet those specific plan development standards for the residential buildings. So you're not gonna have southwestern architecture. It's gonna be architecture that's existing within the, within the existing development already. Might be a little bit more up-to-date than what was built way back in the early nineties, um, but it still will have to follow the same development standards.
Did the HOA give a reason for that?
They did not.
Hmm.
So I was in pretty constant communication with them, um, anytime they would have a meeting or take a vote, and they would just let me know that it was denied.
Interesting. Okay, those were my questions.
Did you wanna hold, or?
No, I was just trying to think of, so, back on the, on the, on the drainage thing.
Yes.
Conditional approval here, you said it was that, that shortfall funding mechanism, correct?
At first building permit.
At first, at first building permit?
Correct.
That's when that would go?
Yes.
And then if this development didn't move forward?
Then the site would stay just the way it is. And then because it is in the flood control CIP program, as well as our program, um, flood control and the city would look for funds, but it wouldn't be for, to complete the funding. But I know flood control has stated, they probably wouldn't, you know, go after it because they have much bigger priorities in the county for a few years. So it would, it would just sit.
It would sit. It would sit as it sits today?
As it sits today.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Ruiz?
Yeah, I, I have a question. Um, so the, the whole specific plan is included in this area? And part of the process is to, maybe, uh, can you explain to me how the, the tentative, so the tentative track map was submitted a while ago? And then it's coming back again for final approval?
It was submitted, it originally was submitted in two thousand and fourteen, so this is the first time it's going to a public hearing.
Oh, got it. Okay. And then the architecture will come back, and, and how long?
Uh, we can ask the applicant that. I don't know exactly where they are in their process.
Okay, then, that's it.
The Paloma del Sol specific plan, when, and, when was that approved and by who?
It was a county Riverside specific plan, so it was not one that was approved by the city. We took it over.
So it was prior to city incorporating?
Correct.
Um, so that Paloma del Sol specific plan has several different neighborhoods that are in it with Paseo del Sol. Did Paseo del Sol, were they engaged in, uh, considering the HOA for, for this neighborhood?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on the way their HOA works. I know that the gentleman that I was in contact with, um, he was with the Paloma del Sol HOA.
Cause I mean, Paseo is actually, I think, closer.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we're done with our questions. Uh, do we have any speakers?
We have one speaker, Steve Corona.
Alright, I will open up the public hearing.
If we could have the applicant first and then, um, public comments from others.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Michael Jagels from Woodside Homes. Just wanna thank you for, uh, this time this evening. I wanna thank staff, Scott, Ron, and Valerie for the years of hard work on this project. Um, we have reviewed the conditions of approval. We accept those conditions of approval, and I'd be glad to answer some of your questions. Um, on the HOA, Paseo del Sol, we met with the overall community two or three times, went to vote two or three times, and they turned us down every time. But yes, we did meet with them all. Um, with the delegates, with the board members, and everybody. On the architecture, we just started, our initial, it was called a, uh, charrette of the architecture. We're looking to do two different products, which would be like six different plans or so. In beginning of July, we'll be meeting with our group, which includes an architectural group, our, our corporation, and, uh, the division to spend about a week on the initial design of the, uh, architecture. And that will go through another process internally for about four weeks to get to where, before we'd even be, bring it to your attention. I think that was the questions that you had, unless you have any other questions?
Any, anything else?
So the question up here is, what will you call it?
I don't know yet.
They don't want you. What the heck?
I don't know yet. Uh, my marketing, uh, director has been, you know, what can we call it? What can it call? I said, let us get it approved first.
Okay.
Then you can go at it.
I was just curious, yeah. Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I will, a public hearing, and you wanna call the first?
Steve Corona.
Welcome.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Uh, Steve Corona, three-three-three-two-zero, Temecula Parkway. I'm here representing the Corona family. Most of you know who we are. We have the Big Horse Feed Store. We do the corn maze. All that fun stuff. I provided, uh, the staff with a, a letter that we wrote, uh, last year, uh, when this was kinda rolling along. I would agree with the assessment of the former developer. I don't have anything good to say about the former developer. Created lots of problems. That, uh, between the city and the Corona family. The, we still have, uh, concerns that we wanna ta, uh, we would talk about regarding the, uh, lack of an environmental impact report, uh, over the years. Uh, we have disagreed with the, the assessment by the, uh, the original Paloma del Sol. Actually, it was the Meadows Project, if, if you go back far enough, uh, but the, uh, the environmental impact report that was done at that time. But this, uh, this has been going on since nineteen eighty-seven. Thirty-seven years. Um, I think we're getting very, very close to what is going to be acceptable by everybody. I do appreciate the folks from Woodside. They've been, um, very good in communicating with us. With, uh, with city staff. City staff has been very good. So, um, uh, I don't wanna say I'm for them. I don't wanna say I'm against them, but the Coronas have never opposed any development project. Uh, we just wanna make sure that the, uh, facilities, uh, were built, the public facilities, the roads. The flood protection was always built. I appreciate the warm and fuzzy version of what has gone on in the past from Ron. Uh, it has been thirty-seven years, and there is a huge history behind, um, uh, the lack of responsibility by, um, the folks in the past. But, um, you know, I, I really feel good about, um, the city's response, um, these days. And, um, I'm looking forward to, uh, hopefully, a, a completion of this project, uh, in the very near, near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. I will close the public hearing, and, uh, we're ready for discussion.
If we could just, since there was a public comment, we always have to give the applicant an opportunity to respond if they would like one. So if we can reopen the public hearing, if they'd like to respond.
I'll reopen the public hearing if you have anything more to add or respond.
Uh, Steve, I appreciate you coming up and the time that we spent with you, working with you. We just spent a lot of time communicating with Steve and the Savalas and, and working with flood control and, uh, with, with Ron and Scott and Valerie. Um, I believe we're there, so I'm, I'm hoping that we can move forward. Thank you.
Okay, I will close the public hearing, and we're ready for discussion.
Can I ask another question of staff?
Go ahead.
Ron, is there any, uh, either conditional approval in here or, um, like, looking ahead, expansion of roads around the project? Is there gonna be any widening on either De Portola or Butterfield?
Oh, good question. So the conditions are, number one, the most important is that the city will construct the project at the first, before the first building permit they need to give us the funding. They need to obtain an easement on the Savala property because there's a big inlet that needs to take those thirty-three thousand, that three, thirty-three thousand CFS and take those flows down to Temecula Creek. When we were looking at that, uh, we asked Woodside to go ahead and design, you know, how when you make a left on Temecula Parkway to Butterfield Stage going north, there's two lanes and it drops really quick at the, at the Big Feed. Um, we thought, you know, if, if we don't do that now, then, uh, that's, that would be, it would look really bad to put, we're gonna tear up Butterfield Stage Road. Might as well put the two lanes back. So the project's conditioned to put the two lanes all the way up to connect into De Portola Road. So it'll be complete at that time.
Going north?
Going north.
Okay. So, but no expansion on south side or entrance in and out of the, the community then?
There is no entrance there because of the, um, cha, the channel that needs to accept some flows. It's also mitigation, so that won't be an entrance into the community. It'll come from the adjacent planning area that was approved and built back in ninety, ninety-eight. And then it'll come from the north.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question too? So the entrance on the west side, right, of the property?
Mm-hmm.
That's adjacent to the other homes?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I didn't really look at that. I didn't drive out there and look at that.
That's the...
What street is that?
Sedan Way.
Sedan?
Yeah, so if you go out there today and you go through the Paseo del Sol community and you get down to this area, so that's Sedan and it comes right off Volterra. And Sedan, right now, has barricades at the end. And so there's a row of houses that, that you see there. That barricade just stops traffic right there. So essentially, foot, uh, vehicle traffic can now go up through this development and then head north to De Portola.
Yeah. Okay. So I guess along with Adam's question.
Mm-hmm.
So there won't be any kind of widening of that road at all or anything like that?
No, that, that was built to standard, Sedan. Yeah, it was built to standard. So it always anticipated this development would come in. And that they would extend off of it. So that was already, already anticipated. But the two, the two residences, so people would be able to take Volterra to Sedan and then get out to De Portola if they desired, or go their natural way. Um, out to, um, Campanula.
Okay. And then going in as far as the, the entrance off of De Portola.
Yes.
I know as you, this just, a, a thought occurred to me. I have a client who lives kind of over there on the right-hand side of De Portola, so the north side. When I'm coming out of their street, like, there are people coming off of that hill really quickly.
Mm-hmm.
So the entrance, how far is that from? Where is that picture again, or? Where is it?
That map, yeah.
Yeah. So that's like at the top of the hill, maybe?
Which, which one?
So the, the road I'm thinking about is Montavo or something like that, on the other side.
On the other side, yeah.
When I'm coming out.
It's right there.
Yeah.
Alcoba?
No, not Alcoba. Montova. Yeah, Montova.
Montova?
So it'll be, it would be right there?
Mm-hmm.
Where the entrance would be?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just saying that's tricky.
Yeah, it's...
Like coming up, I mean, you, it's a blind spot.
It's, it's tricky because of the left turns. It's, see, De Portola's built out, so it is to standard, and that's the way it's going to be. But probably what is going to happen is, we always do an engineering and traffic study post-developments. So we'll have to look at that and determine if any of those movements are conflicting, and we will have to address those as a city.
Yeah, so just kind of a heads up, just in my own experience, it's like, boom, here comes a car, like, all of a sudden.
Okay.
So right at the top of that, not, I wouldn't say the second entrance necessarily, but that first entrance is a little tricky.
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
Don't, don't the entrances to this line up with the entrances to those?
To those streets, yes.
They do, so. So there is a possibility at some point that your traffic study might recommend a traffic light be in one of those locations?
Post-construction, we, we will always do, um, traffic signal warrants to see if it's warranted.
Right.
And we'll do an engineering study. It's just not part of what the developer is conditioned to do. And going back to the original development, when the previous developer had this and everything was going in, all those signals you see out there were part of that, part of that tract development. And so what is existing out there was already in the specific plan. So none of these, these two intersections were not in the specific plan. So therefore, they're not conditioned to put that in. It would have to be a city-led project if we deem it as being warranted.
Okay. Gary? Fernando? No? Okay. My comments is, um, I did spend a lot of time looking at traffic flow through the neighborhood, uh, its impact on the neighborhood next to it. Uh, I don't think there's any cut-through situ, uh, threat of any, you know, cut-through traffic going through either. If anything, there may be a few houses on Voltaire that may come through and use the exit that you talked about, uh, to get on a De Portola. But, uh... exit that you talked about to get on a De Portola, but I think that road design was really, really good. I like the fact that there's three entrances, exits for police and fire, particularly fire. I know it's very important to them to be able to get there quickly, as well as the ambulances. So those are things that I think a lot about, and I think they've done a really, really good job with that portion of the design.
Yeah. I think, you know, it's obviously good to see it finally being developed, right? And I appreciate Mr. Corona's comments, and we know he's been here a long time, and appreciate the city working so long with everybody. And I think that, I guess what I appreciate the most is that I feel like our staff wants to get it right, and that's why it's been 10 years. So if we look at it that way, and, you know, I hope the developer just makes this so amazing that Paseo and Paloma are going, whoa, we should have accepted them. Anyway, I think it's a good project.
So I also appreciate the open space along Temecula Parkway, so houses will not be right on Temecula Parkway, which I think is a very smart, smart thing to do. Anything else?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I guess I'm in the motion mood tonight. I will make a motion to approve planning app number PA 14-0087, tentative track map 36483.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
So we have a first and second, and we will vote all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? No one against, so it's five to zero. And thank you. We appreciate everything you've done in the city. We're thrilled with Somers Bend that you've built, and we're looking forward to another one on the south side. Okay. So we will go to commission reports. Anyone have anything? Anything?
No.
Nope. Yeah. Okay. Anyone going to the Beatles concert tomorrow night? Okay. Community development.
Nothing to report on other than to say our July 3 meeting is going to be canceled, so enjoy your holiday, your Fourth of July holiday.
Thank you. And Public Works, Ron, anything?
Couple of things. We issued notices to proceed on the rehab of Butterfield Stage Road. That's from Temecula Creek to the southern city limits, so right past Vale Middle School and all of that. So we're doing that. That road's in bad shape. And then also Pachanga Parkway. So we're doing Pachanga Parkway also. So we're trying to get both those projects done prior to school starting, so you'll be seeing activity right away. And then the only other announcement, you know, with the change with Pat retiring, Pat's going to be retiring here, July 9 is his last city council meeting. There will be some public recognition of him in case you guys want to be there. And then a change in my role, and so I know you know Valerie, but I wanted to formally introduce her. She's our associate engineer over in Land Dev. She works on all of these applications. Everything that comes to you, Valerie touches, so she's going to be assisting me by starting to take over a lot of these meetings. So I'm not gone, but, you know, I wanted to make sure you guys knew Valerie would be around. Okay?
Thank you. Welcome, Valerie. We look forward to working with you, and we've enjoyed all of our time with Ron, so we know we'll see him every once in a while.
Absolutely.
Anything else? All right. We will adjourn the meeting to, let's see, July 17. Yeah. So it's quite a ways.